...to order, and would you all please rise for the President of the Region? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So this is the time for a public comment on the supplemental budget. Is there anyone that wants to say anything? Hearing none. I will close the supplemental budget hearing, sorry, and adjourn the budget hearing. So, I now call the regular school board meeting to order. And let's see. Rebecca, would you like to read the mission?
Okay. Let's have some amplification here. So our mission statement is graduating all students to be college and career ready, challenging, inspiring, and empowering them to be healthy and productive citizens. Our vision statement is North Wasco is a premier school district. We provide students a rigorous and relevant education, schools performing academically in the top 5% of our nation. Our students are inspired by a talented, innovative, and highly effective staff that values continuous professional growth. Our district graduates citizens who are ethical and motivated to achieve their limitless potential. North Wasco is fully embraced by the community, reflecting its health and well-being. I think we have an awesome demonstration of that tonight.
Thank you, Rebecca. So next on our agenda is a student recognition. And so tonight, I know, we have boys and girls soccer team players in the audience, and we have football players, and cross-country teams. So the board, I'd like you to stand and give applause to the chief.
So if we have each one of you just that represent the teams, we'll start with cross-country and just come up and just tell us just a little bit and who you, what your name and just a little bit about this falls for.
Yeah, right there.
Right up in front.
And give experience of it if you want. So understand.
I'm Jenna Miller, and I am on the girls' cross-country team. And we made it to state, and it was a lot of fun, and we just grew a lot as a team. Our coaches are awesome, and they push us to be our best. And we just improved a lot this season and grew a lot together, the boys and the girls' teams. And yeah, it was a really great opportunity to go to state.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Sam Alvarez. I run cross-country, and this year, we won our district meet for the first time in 21 years, like around there, since like 1998. I know it was fun to go down to state and be with the team and our coaches. It was a great experience.
I'm Courtney Her with the girls' soccer. And this year, we were able to make it to playoffs, which was meaning a lot because it was kind of a building year for us, because last year, we happened to lose about seven or eight really important people that happened to be starters. So getting an opportunity to go to playoffs again was a huge thing for our team.
Thank you.
I'm Zara Vujre, and I play girls' soccer. And kind of like what Courtney said, we lost a lot of important people, so we worked really hard to build our team back together, which worked out because we got to playoffs. And I think we worked really hard for this season, so.
I'm Michael Armstrong with the football team. This year, we came into the year with a new coach, and we were able to make it to the semifinals, which is the first time since 1993. So I'm just proud of the team for our strides this year.
I'm Dallas Follamura with the football team. Yeah, we've got a new coach this year who's been great to us. Our team actually had a lot of drive, and you know, we're making a good playoff run, so I hope we can keep it going.
Oh, yeah.
My name is Jack Abis. I'm with the football team again, and we're hoping to keep it going, say keep winning, keep doing our thing.
Hi, my name's Andy Lopez, and I play boys' soccer. Today, or this year, we actually made it to the playoffs for the second time in a row. Unluckily, we drew the first seed team that ended up winning state, so I mean, but our progress this year was amazing. We actually ended up beating Hidiver for the first time in about 15 years, so it was a good accomplishment.
My name is Omar Torres, and I'm with the boys' soccer team, and I'm just happy overall how our season went.
All right. Well, thank you so much for coming. Is there any other students, athletes that would like to speak? If not, we will thank you again for coming, and we're so proud of all of you and all of the teams and all of the good things that are going on at the Dow High. And again, football players, good luck on Saturday.
It's time now for the student representative reports. So Kylie?
I know, less exciting. So today, I finally like got a breathe, and we started our giving tree. It's been a very stressful month trying to contact all the elementary schools and just get everything in order. So we started that today, which has kind of been cool to see, and work with our community to find kids who need help this holiday season. And already, we had about 20 tags taken off the tree, which is pretty fast for it only being up for like four hours before school was over. As you know, our boys' football team is going to the playoffs in Hermiston this Saturday. They'll play the number, I think they're number three, maybe? Number three seed, La Grande. That'll be at 5:30, and we're trying to have reader buses going. It's kind of a last-minute thing we tried to do. So I'm hoping they get filled, because the student section this past weekend was probably the most exciting one I've seen in the last four years.
Our winter sports started on Monday, so it's been kind of just, fall sports and
winter sports are still kind of starting and ending. We have our Hawk Rally the first Tuesday of our next trimester, so that's going to be recapping all the things that happened during first trimester, just kind of celebrating our success of making it through our first trimester and getting back into the groove of things. And we had the Oregon Success Ask that passed this year in Measure 98, and we had someone come in to our school this week and kind of just look at everything and just hope that we can get more money for our CTE programs and career classes and just help with, you know, lowering the dropout rates and get more students to graduate. And that's all about what's been happening.
Next on the agenda is the migrant program. So who is?
Jonathan Fox.
Good evening, everybody. I'm the director of the migrant education program, and it is my honor to actually present one of the two students who went with me to Washington DC with a migrant program last spring, thanks to the board approval. One of the students who was going to present with him, there's been a death in the family, and unfortunately, last minute, she is not available. So she apologizes, but we understand for her not being able to be here. So Yair is going to present for both of them on their behalf what he learned and a little bit about the program. Thank you.
My name is Yair Santhian. I'm a junior at the Dow High School right now. And this summer, I went to Washington DC for the close-up trip. Do you guys know what the close-up, like, okay, so it's a week-long, it's a week-long seminar, I guess you could say, at Washington DC? And they take you around the Capitol, take you to all the museums and other important places. Every night, you have workshops where you have debates, discussions about current news, and just what's like pretty much the world of politics. And yeah, like, that's a week-long thing, and this summer, I went to it. Yeah. Oh, wait, go back, go back. So yeah, that's me and my partner at the Capitol Building, at Capitol Hill. Yes, okay. So how did this trip affect us? We actually learned a lot about politics and got more interested in it. Like, last night, I was actually watching the Democratic debate. I don't think I would have seen that before this. I learned a lot about current bills that are in the House right now. For example, I didn't know there was a gun, something, okay, I, my memory's a little... Okay, I'll come back to that one. We had a lot of debates every night about the current issues going on, and we didn't get to pick the side we wanted to debate for. So for example, like the gun issue debate, some of us had to debate pro-gun, and that's kind of rare among us. So we had to really be open-minded, and that's something that I didn't really think about doing before, so I really improved my open-mindedness. And there was around 50 kids, how much?
There were 100, maybe, I think, this year.
Okay, so yeah, we made friends from all over the country. There was kids from Texas, California, Nebraska, and it was just a really cool experience to meet people from all over the country. And yeah, and then next, like, just a little video about all the places we went. I'd want to see it. If it plays. It's not, I don't think it's going to play. Okay, so yeah, that's worth it. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
So this is, this program's organized by what entity?
The Migrant Education Program at the Columbia Gorge ESD.
But the DC visit?
Oh, yeah. The Close-Up Foundation is a program that's been in existence since 1971. They have taken over 800,000 students, I believe, on this program to see Washington DC as a classroom.
So it's not specific to migrant education?
No, they have a program. It's called Program for New Americans, and we take the migrant students on that one, because it is a program that identifies better with the students who are in the migrant program than the regular program. They have multiple strengths.
Yes. Awesome.
I recently took a, we went to a Oregon School Board Association, and one of the sessions that I went to presented the new ideas on teaching students about civics. And your example of how you debate, how you debate, and you have consideration and empathy for the audience that is there, that is one of the things that she emphasized is really good protocol. So I was really happy to hear you say that, because that means that effort is being heard by students like you. So thank you for your diligent participation.
Yeah.
So now that you're interested in politics.
Now it is time for comments from the audience about non-agenda items. Is there anybody signed up?
No, I don't.
Okay. So we'll move on. It's the time for the consent agenda. There's two items on the consent agenda. One is board minutes that would need approval, and the other is personnel notes, which is just for your information. So I would entertain a motion to approve the regular school board meetings from October 24, 2019.
I move to approve the regular school board meeting minutes from October 24, 2019, and the personnel notes as presented.
It's been moved to approve the board minutes and the personnel notes as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, we need a second. I'm sorry. I'm sorry I did that. Thank you. Having a second, we can now proceed to take a vote. So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Sub, school board subcommittee reports. Superintendent?
Well, did you, did any of you want to report on OSBA?
Oh, that's right. Is that what that, oh, oh, okay, I see what you're saying. Yeah, so we'll just kind of go, you can either do your subcommittee reports or the OSBA conference, anything like that. So Le, do you want to go first?
Sure.
I have some notes I'm going to read, just a brief synopsis of what I did at the OSBA convention over the weekend. I could go on for hours, so I'm going to stick to these notes, because actually, it was really informative and engaging and actually pretty inspiring. So if, sorry, it's a little difficult, but if I could, the morning I was going to the convention, there was the shooting at the Sogus High School. So I don't want to get into detail. We have some very young people here, but if you could please join me in taking a moment and observing a moment of silence for those families and those children. There were some amazing speakers there. The first session I attended was a school's role in youth suicide prevention. I learned about something called youth line, and unfortunately, I'm so new to the board, I haven't had a chance to tour the school, so I'm not sure how much of this information is available to students, but it was a really inspiring talk about youth that answered this line. So if a child needs to talk to a peer, because maybe they're more likely to be able to talk to a peer than a parent, kids are trained, and it's monitored by professionals, and they help each other through this line, and it's really an amazing service. So I hope that we have this accessible to everybody, posted in bathrooms and places like that. So that was the opening of the event for me. I also went to a session on bonds, and it was really informative. Again, being new to the board, learning the bond process, you know, is interesting, so that was good. Also, I attended a event called a holistic approach to school safety and security. Although it is critical that schools provide for greater access control and increased surveillance, this is simply not enough, says Karina Ruiz and Heather Cordy. And they talked about design's role in creating softer schools with a focus on connection, transparency, and physical and emotional well-being. And some of the ideas they suggest don't cost anything, a calming corner in a classroom, you know, so they had a lot of ideas, actually, that may already be implemented somewhat in the district, but certainly, we could take those ideas. And then looking to build a new school, creating safe spaces, and it was a very interesting talk, so that was also really informative. There was a roundtable discussion on cyberbullying and its prevention. It's also very informative. One on family engagement with the head of the PTA, it was really kind of fun. And one on healthy and resilient staff, that was also really interesting. I'm almost done. The general sessions where the entire group got together, I think there were probably 600 people there from the school board, boards across the state. The first was called Hidden Biases of Good People: Implications for Educators and the Populations They Serve. And this was presented by Bryant Marks, the executive director of the National Training Institute on Race and Equity, and he's an associate professor at Morehouse College, a black college. And he was just amazing, talking about implicit bias and how it's, you know, we're all human, and how we can find methods to get around that bias. So when we go to make a decision that we're not affected by that implicit bias, it was really, really pretty inspiring. Another of the general sessions called Life Animated: A Tale of Autism and Hidden Potential. This was Ron Suskind. He's an author of a book, Life Animated: A Story of Sidekicks, Heroes, and Autism. And it's examining his family's 20-year journey with their youngest son, Owen. There's a film now about their son, who at age three started showing signs of autism, and they were able to reach him through loving what he loved, and it was a very heartfelt presentation. He's created an app to help parents and educators and counselors to connect with children on the spectrum and with other types of mental differently-abled children. And it's really fascinating how they can communicate through technology in a way that maybe they can't face-to-face. So it's opening new avenues for communication, super exciting stuff. Last, I'll say, The Soul, Science, and Culture of Hope was a really fascinating talk presented by Rick Miller, who has an organization called Kids at Hope. And he's saying, inspire, empower, and transform schools to create an environment where all children experience success. And it was, it was really, again, inspiring. I think it's at Arizona State University, they actually study hope. So it was very fascinating. Okay, this is, I'm almost wrapping up here. The biggest highlights for me were actually the speeches by the Teacher of the Year and the Superintendent of the Year. They were amazing. Teacher of the Year is Mercedes Munoz. She's been a special education teacher at Franklin High School since 2014, and she talked about her life, what led her to teaching, and it was just really passionate and wonderful. And then Superintendent Dr. Valderras, he's a product of Oregon's public school system, raised as the child of migrant farm workers in eastern Oregon near the Idaho border, attending public schools in Nissah. He's been superintendent of Eugene School District 4J since 2015, and just another amazing human being. So thank you for letting me take that time. It was so inspiring. It was so amazing. So thank you for having us go, and it was very impactful.
Rebecca?
Well, I ended up getting sick last week, so I was supposed to go to the Trauma-Informed Education pre-conference. I couldn't go, but I spent the day in bed reading about adverse childhood experiences on my own, so I'm just going to do my own self-study on that. Sorry.
That's good. Yeah, that's good.
Done.
Okay. I was not able to attend the conference, because I was originally scheduled to be out of town to speak at a different conference in Denver, and then I had my gallbladder taken out. So everything was off the boards there. So I'm back. I am on the community outreach team, and to date, I don't have anything to record. I'm actually going out, meeting tomorrow with the community outreach team at Columbia Gorge Community College and learning more about what's going on within the community. I did meet with the mayor earlier this week, and so I'm just kind of connecting with community folks and trying to make my rounds to all the schools. I went to Dry Hollow, and I anticipate completing that visit, visitation schedule here pretty quickly, so.
So I also went to the OSBA conference, but Soleil covered that so well, I don't have much else to say. She pretty much said what I was going to say. However, I'd like to add a little bit to Ron Suskind's presentation on autism. She and I also went to the breakout session, and there were, a lot of that was all about the app he's creating in order to facilitate others being able to do the same thing he did, which is communicate with his son, Owen. So Owen, at age three, went from a perfectly, you know, developing child, motor skills and so forth, to regressing. And when they noticed that, of course, Ron and his wife were freaking out that their child was moving backwards. And it ended up that he only had one word that they could understand, which was juice. And I also, I was so inspired by that breakout session and his, you know, his presentation to the whole body, that I got the video to watch on amazon.com, and I watched it with my wife, and of course, at the end of this, it's an hour and a half video. We were both in tears, right? I was in tears a lot, and thanks to the, Jose and myself, and Soleil, we were kind of all in tears lots of the time, because these presentations are really dynamic. Anyway, so I just want to say that he did find that way to communicate with his son by basically using animation that his son loved, to imitating all of the sounds and characterizations of every single Disney animation ever made. His son had memorized all of them, because that's the way he, that was his pleasure. And so his parents noticed that and used that in order to communicate. And that was a, 20 years, and it involved his brother, too. So they all were in it together. And so what's interesting about this movie is that it presents his growth, Owen's growth, throughout time, and you could see, you know, what happened in his, in his life as he grew up and became a young adult. And it's all a positive movie that way. He did have his ups and downs, but what I was impressed with was with his parents, because they always respected what Owen was about as a differently-abled person. And that there's value in the way he saw life that not all people have, and that you can learn a lot from your children, no matter where they're at, and that's important to do. And so just that whole dynamic and seeing that in that film was, I really recommend you guys, everybody looking at that film, if you're at all attracted to learning more about autism. I know that when I was a teacher, I occasionally had autistic child in my classroom, and before I taught, I owned and operated daycare centers in Eugene and Springfield. And one of my students there, this is in the 1970s, early 1970s, they had not, they didn't know what autism was. But looking back on it, I know that she was autistic. She had no language skill at all, and she was about a first-grader kindergarten level. And she would just talk gibberish and disconnected. And but, so, you know, you try to figure her out, you try to help her, but nothing seemed to work, because nobody in the daycare center could really communicate with her. And one day, I just, I was so frustrated, I was so, so I just, I listened to her gibberish, and I imitated it. And all of a sudden, she looked at me like, I'll engage with that. So she talked back to me. Now, I didn't know where to go with that, but I did remember that, so that when I later was teaching public school and I had autistic kids, I knew that to engage with autistic children, you really have to get into their skin and understand where they're coming from and develop programs that they accept and say that they will accept. So for instance, I remember one child, I developed a, or helped to develop a spelling program, which gave words that they were supposed to learn how to spell, and then they would use these very same... they would use these very same words to write sentences. And I used that technique because they, they could relate to that, and basically, they learned how to read through that. You know, I mean, it really assisted their ability to learn and be interested in reading their own stuff. So anyway, just to say, that was, that was huge for me. And then one other thing I wanted to talk about was, I went to one of the other sessions that was memorable to me, and this was by Linda Adams, who's working in the Jefferson 519J district. And she is teaching teachers how to use best practices in a program which is called Math in Real Life. So, she's in the high school level, and she's showing other teachers how to make science and math real to the students. So, she brings, she puts together teacher internships with industry connections, with math, science, and CTE in high schools. And they, for example, she'll connect the students with people of fields of architecture, landscape architecture, engineering, forestry, cooking. And all of the problems in her, in the math classes that she's working with will come from that, you know, ideas from the industry, and they make real-life situations. So the kids, they have, it gives them a reason for doing math. They're not just doing this thing just because they have to learn math. So they're learning for a purpose, and that, that math that they're doing stays with the students, and they're far more engaged. And so, that session was us being like the students, and she split the group that came into little groups, and we all had a problem to do, working as collaborative teams, and in 20 minutes, we tried to create, solve different problems and create different scenarios. So, it really grabbed me, and, so just like Soleil, I was, and Dawn, I was totally impressed with the conference. It was the best, I think, I've ever attended.
I didn't make the conference either. My wife was having surgery in Portland. She got, it went better than expected. We got back in town in time to go to the football game. And I've never seen candy jump up and down in your much of my life. But I will say, after going to that game, that's what we need behind our student athletes, every game, every sport, all the time. It makes the kids more into it, and it was just fun. They had the, party in the parking lot with Alpine and Les Schwab, and Lamont, all of them got together. Great food, great atmosphere, and it was a lot of fun.
So, I also attended the Oregon School Board Association Conference over the weekend. And just the one session that I will add to them was one put on by, actually, my alma mater. Those of you that may not know, I went to Umatilla High School further east of here, and so, go Vikings, by the way. But, in, in that session, what they actually did was presented a lot of their after-school programs. And so, it really resonated, because I've heard a lot of, of parents, and as a parent myself, there's always that gap of, what do you do with your kids after school and before you get home from work? A lot of us are getting home later. And so, they explained kind of what they've done from a need, and it's expanded to now include robotics programs for their kids, and they're going to a lot of those competitions nationally. So, it was really a very tangible and realistic item that could benefit our community. So, that's an additional thing that, from a conversation standpoint, to figure out how we can do that in our district, because it really was a very simple need for a specific student. And like I said, it's evolved over the years. They actually presented findings on how they're actually funding it, because that's always the question, is, you know, you want to do all these things, but the reality is that there is a cost aspect to it in a lot of regards, but they actually identified, you know, how they're doing it via grants and other funding to make those programs a reality and provide that asset and benefit to those parents that do have a work schedule. So I was really encouraged by that, as something that we could do here as a community. And, and just to reiterate what Soleil and John said, I mean, the speakers were very awesome. I've attended other conferences, and these speakers were probably some of the more dynamic ones that I've, I've seen. So, I have no idea how they're gonna really top this conference from a speaker standpoint, but it was really good. And lastly, it's just good to have that development. A lot of us are new, so there are a lot of those opportunities that a lot of us are taking on this first year being on the board. So it's been really helpful to help guide us, especially as one of the biggest topics of conversation is the Student Success Act, as rightfully it should. We do have a large undertaking in terms of being good stewards of what is coming from that act. So, there is a lot of information, a lot of learning behind that, that we as a board need to be involved with, in addition to what the district administration's doing. So, a lot of that's just helpful to help us become better board members and stewards for the community, so.
So, I did not get to go either, but I want to talk about, like, basically two things. First is the Walk to School Wednesdays. I, I do this every Wednesday at Dry Hollow, and we're, we're averaging 17 to 20 kids, and we just need to really encourage the participation. A lot of these kids are already walking, but they're not walking with the group, so they're not getting counted. St. Mary's takes the money every year, and it's enough money for a PE program that it's, I mean, we've just gotta figure out a way to get them more involved. The other thing I wanted to do is, I've gone to the middle school Veterans Day thing three, three years or four years, and this year, with students at Dry Hollow, I was invited to the Dry Hollow one, and I was like, for an elementary, it was, I mean, the, the middle school does an awesome job, the Dry Hollow did a phenomenal job. So, as a veteran, I thank them. I heard people that, one of the guys, speakers that's from a big city, has never seen anything like that in a school district before, so just thanks to this district too for teaching kids what it's actually about, not just a, a day off. So, thanks to the two schools, it was awesome.
Thank you, board members, for your input. Uh, let's see. All right. Thank you. So, aha, the superintendent's.
Now you can move on to me, yes. So, great segue. Tonight, I'm going to present just a little bit on the Continuous Improvement Plan, which is our district plan. It's due again, December 6th, and we spent Monday working on it as, as a district. And so, I had the privilege of working at a table where we had, you know, district administration, we had teachers and administration from, from all levels, and we worked on one area. So, at this point, thanks to Penny Grodding and the ESD for all the help they, they have given us to help facilitate this, and Penny actually typed up our, our work and got it to me. So it's, it needs to be looked at one more time before we send it off, so I don't want to be handing it out yet, but just be aware that as soon as, as the final edits are done, we're going to send it off, and we will also post it to the website. It doesn't need to be approved by the board, but I, I want you aware of what we're doing, because this is the, the foundation that, moving forward from this, we're going to then build and expand to include the, the planning as we go into the new year with, for the Student Success Act dollars. So, I'm just going to, again, focus on the goal that I worked on with, with my table group. And, and it focused around our, we, we start always with our mission and vision, and then we move to our, what we refer to as board and district goals. And as Renee Sessler pointed out, they really are district goals, so the board will be making their own goals pretty soon. But the two areas, the two areas of district goals that we focused on in this first goal was to increase academic achievement district-wide with special emphasis on reading, writing. In this particular piece, it's mathematics gains. We have a real concern, continuing concern, that we are not getting the, the results from our students, and we're not closing the, the gap for certain students. And so, we really want to focus on that. And we, obviously, throughout this piece, we, we focus on all the other areas as well, but this one in particular, we wanted to make sure that we're engaging the, the students and learners in a different way. So, we, to, to do the Continuous Improvement Plan, you do a comprehensive needs assessment summary. And so, you're looking at all of your data from your different state testing, and there are all kinds of acronyms about the kind of state testing, and then local formative assessments that we do within each of the, the buildings and at each of the levels. We also do surveys, which include staff surveys, student surveys, parent surveys, those kinds of things to, to try to bring in what, what's, what's happening. And then we take this particular piece, and we outline where do we see we need to improve. And so, the surface, what surfaced from that is obviously English language arts and math achievement, particularly with our English language learners, our American Indian, and our students with disabilities. We need to be able to increase attendance in, in all areas for our students, and we also need to increase our, our parent and community engagement, so that parents are more involved in, in student learning. So in each of the schools, before, before we started to work on the district plan, in each of the schools, parents, staff, students, and community partners were engaged in a process of developing school improvement plans. And so, from surveys to focus groups, that work went on last, last spring. And so, the particular goal that I'm just gonna share with you, it's just one of many. You can see, we've got a nice thick little packet here of just the, the goals and strategies. But this first one, the goal is to increase academic achievement in math for all students by two points per year for all students, and four points per year in each of the following subgroups. Students with disabilities, English language learners, Native American, economically disadvantaged, and Hispanic slash Latino students. And those are categories that the, the state gives us, and those are, as we separate out those subgroups, those are the ones that we're not closing the achievement gap with. It's really difficult to have, to put more of a challenge, is the fact that we're, we're saying two points for all of these students, but the ones, in order to close the gap, we really have to get much more out of the others. So, we started by saying, well, we want to start right after the first of the year. We don't want to wait for, you know, to begin next year. So right after the first of the year, the metrics that we're using is, is to take a look at what our, what our data tells us about each of these categories. And we broke that out and put that down for each of the, the subgroups that, that I talked about earlier. And so, we're going to have that lined out, and, and we said, by June of 2021, we're going to have all of these students increasing, and in each area, we gave an amount that they were going to increase by if we actually were staying true to this other, this other piece. And then by June of 2022, all students would increase to, to get a, a larger degree. So, again, we're starting right after the first of the year with these. We want to make sure that, that our students are doing well in, in all areas. We also are doing what's referred to as initiative alignment to support the district goals. And so, for example, some of you may be aware, we're using what's referred to as EL Achieve for an area called constructing meaning, and that's, we want to be able to provide support to our English language learners and our ever-English language learners and all students, to try to scaffold and, and build their academic language and their success. We've got AVID, which is Advancement via Individual Determination, school-wide. We've got that at the high school, we've moved, we've moved it into the middle school, and hopefully, over the next couple of years, we're going to move that into the elementary as well, and provide supports to students to be able to achieve academically, regardless of, of where they want to go in life. We want them to have certain skill sets. We're dealing with chronic absenteeism, and that's to strengthen the systems that we have to support students to be able to be connected to and stay engaged in our school. We have the high school success dollars, which our high school student talked to a little bit before, in, in terms of, you know, the state recently came out and, and visited us. We're, we're up to seven career and technical education programs at the, at the high school. We've got a large number of advanced placement courses going on, and, and the things that we're doing with the money that we're bringing in is really targeted at trying to reach every student, and in particular, those, those subgroups that, that we need to really do better with in terms of, of getting academic outcomes. And we also, in the, in the district, are, are dealing with what's referred to as multi-tiered systems of support. So that's everything from helping students that, with social-emotional learning, where they, they need to have a better way to engage and, and calm themselves and, and be able to engage in learning. So, behavior kinds of support, reading support, math support, all of those. So, the next thing that we do, we go to annual evidence. So in each of the goal areas, we have to outline the strategies that we're going to, to use. We have to actually have a, a written theory of action for each of these areas, and we outline fall, winter, and spring, what are the measures we're going to use that, that help us know that what we're doing is being successful. I think one of the things that I wanted to, to mention in particular about the, the math goal is, what we're finding is that even though we've changed curriculum in recent years, our concern is, especially at the elementary school level, we're not getting as many students as far along as we want to by the, by the time they're, they're going into the middle school. And so, we're talking about bringing in, and working on having math specialists and/or math coaches, people who really know math very well and, and know how to help students who may be struggling in that area. We want them to be able to work with the teachers and help them, but we also are looking at the possibility of maybe in, in some grade levels at the elementary, we, we may have students going to math specialists rather than having every teacher teach, teach math, because we really need to focus on, on, again, getting these, getting these outcomes improving for especially our, our subgroups. Okay? So that's, that's where we are. We've got a lot of action steps outlined. We, we're basically there except for the edits, and as, once we get the, the chance to have our, our team take one more look at that, we'll get that finalized and, and off to the state in time to meet the December 6th deadline. Any questions?
I have one. So, what staff members, you don't have to name names, but were on that team to come up with your plan?
So we, we had members from, we had teachers and principals, and then district office and, and ESD, folks who specialize in, in helping us with curriculum and assessment. And so, that's, that's what we had, and we had representation from every, every school and, and multiple, like the grade, different grade levels, whether it be, you know, your early K3 or your 4-5, middle school, high school. So, good representation. And they did a, did a wonderful job of, of engaging in the work, and had very good insight.
Any other questions from other board members?
Okay, so this will be the foundation, and then the next step, and that'll go to what you were talking about when you, you know, if we're going to do some, either after-school kinds of things and/or summer school kinds of areas that we want to be looking at, that those kinds of things will start to come in to focus as we move forward with the Student Success Act dollars and deciding how we're going to use those to make sure that all of these students that are, that are not achieving as high, at a, as a higher level as, as we want to see them achieve, that we can engage them, connect them, and, and help them, so.
Thank you, Kennedy. So, next item on our agenda is the Chief Financial Officer's report. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Karen. I, I don't have much to say about the financials. I'd point out the enrollment is actually unpleased. We'll see a downturn, I think, next month like we typically do, but, but right now, we're five kids ahead of where we were a year ago. And so, that's, that's pleasing. five kids ahead of where we were a year ago, and so, that's, that's pleasing. I, the financials, this early in the fiscal year, and we've only had a couple of payrolls, so whoever dreamed the system up where the federal fiscal year is September 30th and ours is June 30th causes a few concerns. We're wrapping up last year's federal program, and, and of course, last March or April, we did a budget, not knowing what the federal awards would be that we'd get notice of in August, after the budget's already been adopted. So, it's a time that we'll have to make minor budget adjustments. I don't believe any of them will rise to the level that we'll have to have a budget here in our week, if not, which I'll speak to a little later. I do want to make a couple of progress reports, not 100% financial, but partially. I did finally got contact, confirmation from the, I guess, our surveyors, civil engineers or tennis, they were out and surveyed the property last Thursday. I'm sure the holiday will get in the way, but we're to begin negotiating with the hospital immediately after Thanksgiving, so that is progressive. The other one isn't directly impacted to, to us, but I, I think it is, it certainly affects us, Candy and I, and a couple of the teachers from the high school that met yesterday, two days ago, anyway, with the community college, and they're planning their skill center. And it's, it's nice to be at the table as they're designing the space. They're very interested in a flow of CTE programs, and I just, I guess I just want to give them a kudo for, for, number one, lining up the money to get the job done, and number two, to, to recognize that it's a continuum from, the discussion was around, you know, middle school needs to do something, and through high school to community college. So, that was encouraging. So, that's all I had to report, Mr. Chair.
So, we have a side on the agenda, is Board Attorney at the fore, Jason?
The only thing I have tonight is, is the board is aware, there's been a complaint filed by a member of the community against the school board, pursuing the, the policies that are in place in GBM slash KL and the AR that goes along with that. My recommendation to the board is that you refer the matter to, or direct that the district staff engage a third party to conduct the investigation and report back to the board on that.
Okay. So, I would entertain a motion to direct staff to refer the investigation to a third party and report back to the board.
I will make the motion to divert it to a third party and report back to the board.
I second the motion.
Motion's in the name, second. Any discussions? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. So, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. So, we have action items to approve. So, the first two are a request to approve resolutions having to do with the money going into our operations and being dispersed. You want to talk about those?
Just briefly, I think you touched on it, obviously, one of the celebratory facts, factors at the convention was the passage of the Student Success Act, and this action that you're about to take is, is a direct result of that. In 2017, I think it was, the voters approved Measure 98, and that was to allocate $300 per high school student. Noble idea, no money to do it, and through, now with the passage of the Student Success Act, they, they agreed, they, the state agreed to pre-fund, I think, before the collection of those dollars, they've allocated dollars to make this, the Measure 98 fully funded for the year that we're in. That was not the projection we had when we prepared the budget, and when, when the change in a fund group like the state funds exceeds 10% of the amount, we have to go through this, this process, but this, so we have, there's been Kurt and others have developed a plan with the state for, for what we want to do with the money, and this is to, to recognize the additional expenditures of $193,000 that we're going to get from Measure 98, which we're thankful for certainly. I could guess, I think I could highlight the two major areas that, that these dollars are programmed for. We've entered into an agreement with Nextdoor Incorporated for another sort of alternative ed program on a contract basis. They do it over on Kelly Avenue. From all reports, it's been wildly successful and doing a great thing. And the other one was, we began, held occupation strand in the CTE program with a half-time teacher this year and with the expectation of going full-time. So, I'd welcome the board's approval of this resolution.
So, I will entertain a motion to adopt a supplemental budget resolution 19-20-04.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 192004.
Second.
So, it's been moved in second to approve that request, that resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Do you want to speak to anything?
Very briefly, 192003 is, again, we get, got a federal award last year and didn't, didn't launch, and so, I carried it over and thought that it was going to be much along the same line. Turns out, we're going to spend it in the area of instruction rather than about half in each area, so we need to move the appropriation from support services to instruction. Doesn't change the total amount of ground, just the functions under which it would be spent.
So, I'll entertain a motion to adopt supplemental budget resolution 19-20-03.
I move to approve resolution 192003 as presented. Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the motion for resolution 19-20-03. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. I have to find my place here, hold on. Let's see, the next out of, the next action item is out-of-state travel request. Kurt, would you like to present that?
This is Chuck Weber, he's our, he's the one traveling. He's our computer science teacher. I've been talking a lot, I know, about CTE, seems like a lot lately, but I'll take one second and talk about football. There was 1,417 people at the game.
Wow.
That's, that's through the gate. That doesn't include all of us and the players and the cheerleaders and the band and et cetera, et cetera. So, it was, it was a party. In case you missed it. COPA support, COPA's the Confederation, or sorry, Central Oregon Perkins Alliance, and that is who we, that's who manages our Perkins money. So, kind of the Bend schools, Redmond, us, I don't know everybody that's in Perkins, but Central Oregon, basically. They manage the Perkins money, and they allotted, I can't remember exactly, maybe 10 slots to attend the national convention. How many? Oh, only five, thank you. Yeah, five slots to attend the national convention out of the whole consortium. So, they gave Mr. Weber one of those five slots, and of course, they, they pay for the trip. It's in Anaheim, California this year. Do you want to say anything about what you do?
Sure.
Yeah?
So, I'm one of only two computer science programs in our region. The other one is in Bend. Ours is actually unique, and we do IT, computer hardware, which is a model they're actually using to expand to other schools. And we're the only one in the, pretty much in the state that does it. I even had four kids get an industry certificate this afternoon, I haven't sent them both the email yet. So, that was pretty cool. We have a combination of both IT hardware and then what's really digital production, which is a lot of different ways to get into software development, whether it's Photoshop, web development, game coding, all kinds of little different tendrils to get into technology. I jokingly talked with other teachers and told them that I have the unobstentious problem of my curriculum has to change about every three years. It is constantly updating. I jokingly said, I wish I could be an algebra teacher, because what they teach for algebra now is what they're going to teach in 25 years. The methods might change with algebra as algebra. Computers go obsolete, and software goes obsolete so quickly that, you know, our students are able to jump in and learn new things. Right now, one of the cool things we're doing is we're building a 3D printing lab, because that was one of the demands that the students had, they're like, hey, we want to get in 3D printing. So, almost half of my classes are all driven by student demand and what they want to do, so every year is kind of an adventure. We're going to, you know, retool and find new things. So, that was one of the reasons I wanted to go to this conference, was to be able to meet up with other computer science teachers, other industry, you know, folks that, that tie in and work with programs like ours.
Board members, any questions?
I just want to say, thank you, that's awesome, the stuff that you're able to bring to the kids, because you're right, that, that is very unique, and not every kid has the ability to access that program. So, thank you for what you're doing and for re-upping every three years. I'm actually surprised that three-year intervals, I would assume, is shorter.
Some of it is, some of it isn't. Like, one of the discussions right now, we're teaching a Photoshop class. If you have a sophomore that's, that's learning Photoshop right now, by the time they graduate, they're going to have three to four iterations of that software just before they graduate high school. If they go to get a graphic artist, you know, degree in college, by the time they're done, what they used as a sophomore in high school will no longer even be close to, you know, what's available then, but at least gives them an idea of, you know, hey, this is something I want to go and do. We, we use a different model, we, it was, we were talking at our last COPA meeting, the, the program they have in Bend is very, very different. They do AP computer science, they do hard, like CS-level, college-level things, and they were really interested, because we're completely different. Ours is more of a survey-type system where kids get a, a chance to go and see a little of this and a little of that and be like, oh, well, that's what's really interesting. They almost feel at their pigeonhole, then they don't have the ability to change, you know, and iterate for their student demand nearly as well as we can. So, we're, we're pretty happy with what we've, we've crafted.
Yeah, that's cool. I really applaud you as a teacher to basically design your class around student interest and student request. That's cool.
Is your hair still here?
Hi.
Oh, so, yeah, Robbie Denning, him and I started last year, and we did a video production class, which we're doing again, we're retooling it. We completely, we were like, okay, what are we going to use from last year? What, maybe 15, 20%? Because so much of it has already changed. So, you know, when, when possible, I work with anybody who's, you know, local in industry, get them to come in, talk to students, you know, work with us in building our curriculum. You hear, who is the, the student that talked about the immigrant program?
Yeah.
Is actually one of my rock star students. He's taken several of my IT courses and absolutely crushed it, so.
Wow, that is very cool.
I do have one question.
Sure.
Where can I get a shirt like that?
So, this is actually a one-off, and people love this. They did this, they had a, a pink week where they, where they sold these as a fundraiser. I'm a big guy, and I'm like, hey, can I get a tall shirt? And they're like, we don't have a tall shirt. So, I found the only tall shirt that would fit me, and it was a slightly brighter pink than everybody else's. And they were like, we all want the bright pink next year, so you can't miss me when I'm walking down the hall wearing this shirt, so.
You do glow.
Little bit. Little bit.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we have to approve.
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel request by Chuck Weber. I'll second it.
It's been moved in second to approve the request for out-of-state travel for Chuck Weber. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes.
If you want, I'd be more than happy, I'm going to make a report back to our COPA group, but if you want, be willing to come and make a short report back of, you know, what we found from, from the conference.
That would be great.
Cool. All right, thanks.
Yep. Next action item is a request to retire and rehire.
Lynn Carpenter, and I, I would recommend that, that we go along with that. That's one of our, our current technical education teachers, and very much, as Kurt mentioned earlier, by next year, we're going to move that to a full-time position. Right now, it's, it's a part-time position through the end of the year, so it'd be important to keep her in place.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve the request to rehire Lynn Carpenter in her current position as a licensed teacher located at the Dallas High School until June 20th, 2020.
I move to approve the request to rehire Lynn Carpenter in her current position as a licensed teacher located at the Dallas High School until June 20th of 2020.
Second? Anybody?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve this request. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Approve equipment and materials use request. Anybody presenting it for that?
No, that's up to the board.
Ah, okay. So, do you want to take a moment to read the material there, board members?
Is this something we've done in the past for this particular group?
Not for this particular group, but, but we do have a history for other.
Yeah, right. Yeah, like rodeos and stuff like that, but this is a new organization.
This is.
Can I ask a question of Dawn? How, what's the condition of the bleachers, if they're getting shuffled around so much? I'm just getting concerned that they're getting beat up pretty bad.
Well, they're aging, of course, just, just like all of us, you know? Speak for yourself.
They're aging backwards.
Some gracefully, some. Yeah, we have one, one set of bleachers out of the three, which we only keep for pretty much our use only, because it did get hit once, and it's left square, so that's the one that we use. The other two are in fair condition, I'll say. I can't say great condition or poor condition. The thing is, we can't get those recertified by the company who makes it, because the company does not make that model anymore. So, we can't recertify them, so, but they are in fair condition. And it really depends on how far they go. I wouldn't send this thing out 100 miles, but a couple miles, yes, a few miles.
I know we talked about this before, but is there a reason why we don't charge a wear and tear fee so that we can eventually replace these bleachers?
We just haven't.
We've just never done it.
We've just never done it.
Could that be an administrative action?
That could be part of the overall.
Past use.
Yes.
Correct.
I'm, I just want to express concern of us moving these around constantly, that whoever's using them, they're not, they're not paying anything for them, and we're, we're bearing the cost of use, use, and basically, we're seeing a depreciation of an asset that we're ultimately going to have to put the bill for, for replacement or repair. So, I, I'm very concerned about seeing these keep going out.
That conversation has happened in the past amongst board members. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve this request.
How much does it cost to replace one of those guys?
Actually, Mr. Anderson, could you tell us, because I was not here when we bought those.
They were $55,000 a copy, then, so I suspect it's $75,000, they're ten years old or so.
Yeah, they probably have an average life of 15 to 20 for the portable. Yeah, they probably have an average life of 15 to 20 for the portable that I've seen. It really depends on how they're used. Like the one, it probably got a little less life because it was sort of hit, you know, when it was being moved around by us, it wasn't somebody else. So that's short its life. And the more they travel, the more they come loose.
So even if we did charge a usage fee of, say, like 500 bucks a day?
Nothing.
And we rent it out six times a year, that's pretty small potatoes for replacement.
It would take a very long time, though.
Yeah, so it's, it really wouldn't, it doesn't cover the depreciation.
It would cover some maintenance, like the batteries, you know, purchase the batteries for, because it doesn't take part batteries. My, your repairs maybe, but not a replacement.
Can we ask his opinion if you think that this is a wise idea to lend out our equipment for free?
I've always been the idea that we shouldn't loan them out if we don't have to. Now, there's a, and I don't like this pigeon shoes. We do have a couple of community events, like Cherry Festival, which is, is pretty much the whole town, but probably a little different because it is a community thing, so.
Well, actually, actually, this particular one is a community, very much a community event.
See, I think as part of the community and if it's close, yes, we only do it, what, three times a year maybe, with Cherry Crush or Cherry Festival.
Cherry Festival is asked and then it started with actually the drag races in Dalsmore.
If it's a community-based event close, I would say yes, but I wouldn't go, you know, for everyone to ask, and that's the problem when you start opening up the door, so that's really up to you.
I'm concerned about consistency as far as, you know, policy.
Now, this is, we could put in our kind of user agreement, which we're working on now, policy, but that's still a draft form, so.
And the other piece is, is that you could look to changing the policy back to the way it was before where the superintendent decided on those pieces and/or just restricting some of it so that, but I would say in this particular instance, you want to give plenty of time because you've got community partners that are depending on this now, so.
So could we, you know, maybe through the course of this year, approve, but recommend that we look, relook at that policy?
Absolutely.
And maybe put it back into your hands?
Sure.
Rather than have it be a board decision?
Sure.
And you guys work on that premise use policy?
Absolutely.
That makes sense?
Does that make sense?
Yeah. You want to make that motion?
Okay, well, I will approve the, this particular equipment use request by the Last Days of Jesus Inc. for using one set of bleachers, April 10th through April 12th of 2020. I'll second it.
It moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Are there any other information items?
No, you've got your action item on the OSBA election.
Oh, yeah. Alright, okay, so the names are Paul, what?
Paul Zastro.
Paul Zastro, okay. I had that right, thanks. And Scott, what was his last name?
Rod.
Rod, Rodriguez?
Rogers.
Rogers.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's just one.
Sorry, I didn't look that up. I got busy with many other things today.
There's only one.
So.
Here's the two names.
Okay.
And then the third one is the legislative committee.
The third one is the legislative.
No, that's different.
Yeah, it's separate.
Okay.
It's up to the board, but those that attended the regional were able to hear both Scott and Paul speak, and so from that may have some idea of which one they would like to vote for.
So what are we being asked?
To be voting right now to nominate?
Oh, I see, okay, okay, I gotcha. Okay, so we have to make this vote, right? So all those in favor of, can I do it?
Well, I would just have someone make a motion to, on one or the other.
And then see if you get a second and a vote on it.
But can I ask a question?
You certainly can.
Is Scott the gentleman who, I hate to sound like this, but he's the taller of the two, right?
He's from the.
Yeah, okay.
And he's actively on it right now.
And he facilitated the, well, for those that went to the OSBA convention, he facilitated our regional roundtable.
Yes.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I don't know if there's any other discussion, but I would move that we, is it nominate, is that the word? Or put our vote in for Scott?
It's vote for, right?
Yeah. That we cast a vote for Scott for, thank you, Scott Rogers, for board officer, yes?
For position two.
Position two, board region.
Okay, so the motion has been made to elect Scott in position two for the board, OSBA board officers. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Oh, we need a second. Ah, okay, I need a second. On that motion. Is it okay if I?
Sure.
I'll make that second. So it's been moved and seconded to elect Scott for the position of OSBA election for board officers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm going to abstain because I didn't go to the regional meeting and I didn't read these chapters, so.
I'll abstain as well, because it's a cool thing.
Okay, so.
We need call for abstentions.
Okay, so, so it's been, I don't know if I know how to do this. Can I get some advice here, Jason?
Sure, you've got two abstaining, three abstaining?
Three.
Four abstaining?
Dawn, Jose. So there's still four of you, you can still vote.
Okay, so.
I got four abstentions.
Oh, four?
Yeah.
Alright, well, let's just go through.
I don't think you can take it, actually.
We'll go through it one at a time, either say you abstained or, what did you put your vote, so?
I abstained.
Okay.
I abstained. Abstained.
That's three.
Abstain. Abstain.
I vote yay.
And I vote yay.
Obviously, we need more time.
We need.
The motion fails.
The motion fails.
Yeah, the motion fails. And we, yeah.
I would, pardon me? Will you make another motion?
Yeah, if you, if you want the other one, then you could do that.
I would make a motion to vote for Paul Zastro.
Okay. Motion's been made to vote for Paul for OSBA board officer, region two. Do I have a second for that?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
We need to give our recommendation tonight on which of these two people we would like to fill this position, right? How many votes do we need to elect that person?
We need four.
We need four. And we have how many abstentions?
We have four. Five, we had five the last count, five abstentions.
Okay. So it sounds like we can't get enough votes if these people abstain a second time because they don't have the information.